Called together the meeting of the Menhill Planning Board, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, six thirty. Roll call, we have, we have an agenda here, any changes to the agenda?
You want invocation?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
The, uh, we do have a quorum, we have actually one plus a quorum, we will work there for a while. Uh, invocation, Roger, would you do the invocation?
Sure. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank for this time we be together, we just pray for your discernment, Lord, as we look into the issues that affect our community as we are at these meetings. We just lift up our emergency personnel and our first responders, and we just pray that you give them safety. And we just, uh, also lift up our military all around the world and pray that you give them safety and bring them home safe to their families. In the name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Roger. Um, approval, we got two minutes to approve here, because we didn't get them last time, the April eighteenth regular meeting, uh, minutes, can I get a motion on that?
Motion.
All right.
Second, second.
Second, but Roger, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we have the July eighteenth, uh, regular meeting, minutes, uh, can I get a motion on that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, um, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, any addition, deletions on the agenda items? Uh, reports, John, anything to report?
Yes, sir.
No old business, so let's get down to it. New business, uh, discussion and recommendation on ZC twenty-two dash two, filed by Chris Hertz to request site plan and architectural approval, including building materials for property located at ten eight one five Clear Creek Commerce Drive, tax parcel number one three seven dash one five two dash six four. How you want to do this, John?
Let me introduce it, and I'm going to ask the applicant just to come up and give the same presentation he made at the, uh, board, uh, the public hearing the other night. I just wanted to just provide a little context, so when Clear Creek was originally rezoned, this goes back to the late nineties, early two thousands, um, there was a condition, so this was one of the earliest conditions, there was a condition that said that the front facades of all the buildings shall be constructed of masonry or brick material. In addition, any side or rear, uh, visible from the street also had to meet that requirement. Fast forward to two thousand nineteen, uh, the developer of Clear Creek came in to add to that list. At that time, there was a large building that was, uh, being proposed, what became Mosack Building, and they added to that list that the front facade shall be constructed of masonry, brick, stone, so they added stone, um, precast concrete panels, glass and or tilt wall concrete panels, and then in addition, all the building, the, the side and rear, um, visible from the street has to meet that same requirement. So the applicant here, uh, the, Clear Creek, the way it is set up is typically, this is all administered by staff, uh, the site plans approved, architectural, everything is approved by staff. This particular application, I sent out a note to the applicant and asked a question about the materials that I saw on their plans, and that is, the purpose here tonight is they are proposing the addition of a new material. And I'm going to ask him to maybe stand up and he could talk about that, and I have some, also some elevations that were not, um, available at the public hearing, but he's provided them tonight.
Yeah, th- uh, thank you. My name is Chris Hertz, I'm the architect, um, do I need to give my address?
Yes, please.
Three three zero West, I work for WHNR Architects, and the address is three three zero West Tenth Street, Charlotte, two eight two zero two. The elevations that I presented the other night were approved by, and that's what that letter is, our, it's our approval letter from the Architectural, um, Review Board of the, uh, Clear Creek Business Park. That's where the site is, in the park, and that's, uh, just a simple site plan, um, I'd, I'd like you to note that the front of the building, um, is, of course, facing the street, and that's basically east, the south side of the building has a walkway, uh, because we have exits out of that side of the building, so there's a sidewalk that walks along it. The north side of the building is, there's a couple of loading docks, there's a drive-in door, and, uh, that's really where people are going to come in and out of the building. The rear of the building, um, will be, you'll notice that the building looks a little small for the site, they plan to add on to this building eventually. So, the elevations, I guess, want to go to that, John?
Just bear with me one second, and close this out.
Now, those are the elevations I presented the other night.
Yep, and I'm going to get your.
And I think you want to maybe go to the, to the new plan?
Yes. All right.
These are, I, um, the, the gentleman that were here the other night asked for some examples of what these panels look like, these are just some shots of, um...
This particular panel, um, is a, uh, it's insulated metal panel, very, very durable, uh, and this is what they're proposing to use on the front and the two sides of the building, um, this will dent, I can demonstrate that to you, I've got a four pound, uh, sledgehammer in my truck, and I can show you, this is impossible to dent because it's compressed around this, sour foam, and it has a great insulated value and interior look.
So what's the, the interior is, which, uh?
Yeah, this, that's metal.
Yeah, but I mean, is that the exterior of it right there, that, what's going to be faced out? Oh, really?
That's the exterior, it, it, it emulates, uh, tilt and the ethos, where we have some ethos on the, on the building, so it, it really looks like tilt.
Can I hold it?
You can have it, you can beat on it, whatever you want to do, very durable, a lot of buildings are being built with this, now, it's not cheap.
Four pound hammer won't dent it.
No, I, you want to see it?
Anybody want, touch feel? We can hold it. Weighs eighty-five pound, Kenny's just strong.
Yeah, let me just add one.
Very, very durable. So, um, you can go to the next slide, there's just a few buildings that are built with these panels, it's a, it's more of a high-tech look, uh, and they're not cheap, I would add.
Now, would this be the whole building itself?
Yeah, except for the front. Well, yeah, let me, let me.
I'm sorry, I got a little head over there.
The elevations, and explain to you, but there's another one, but you can see that these panels, because they're so strong, and they're taken right down, great, and here are the revised elevations, um, the, the way these printed out, I apologize, the dark that you see is brick, the front is the top elevation, and you have brick, and then above the windows you have ethos, and then there's ethos over at the front door where there's, where there's storefront, the higher, this is a building, this is a warehouse with an office in front.
Hey, Chris?
Yes?
Can you get on the mic so we can, so we can just pick it up, so she can do the minutes?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The, uh, the, the front of the building is brick, and you'll see ethos above the windows, and ethos there by the entrance before you go up to the higher, um, portion of the roof that's on the corner, that's all brick. When you come down to the, uh, north elevation, you'll notice there's a brick wainscoting, and when you get onto the south side of the building, we don't have any brick. The wider panels show in there, the ones above, I, I'm, I just, I have to point at stuff, the ones above the brick in the front will be this panel. The two sides of the building will be this panel, all the way around. Now, when we get to the back, we're proposing to use a typical metal building R-panel, because this building is going to be added on to, and there's, it does not face the street, and the two sides, uh, of course, it's, it's in the rear, so it's not on the sides, but why I'm here tonight is to, to get you to take a look at using this particular panel, really around three sides of the building. Uh, the other night, we had some conversations about the, uh, other metal building panel, uh, that we were proposing to use on the two sides, was easily dented, and the board did not want a panel that was easily dented. So what we've come back to you to propose is that we use this panel on three sides of the building, and I have a, I have a, in the back...
The back is just a typical metal building panel.
So, uh, that's why we're here, and, and we've got, um, uh, we've got a foundation footing permit from Mecklenburg County, and the, we've been, we've been waiting, uh, this is the builder here, Michael Johnson from Ascent Building, and we've been, uh, we've been anxious to get the project going, the owner's very anxious. I'm, I'm hoping that, the best thing that could happen is you would approve using this, this new panel on the three sides, and allow us to, you know, to, to carry it right down, there's a concrete walk on the, on the south elevation that runs all along it, and that's not the side of the building that people will be really using. Uh, we do have brick down by the loading docks and all across there on that, on that busy side. And, uh, we'd like to, we'd like to pour the, begin to pour the footings, uh, the pad, it's pad ready, and, uh, we'll go back to Mecklenburg County once we get approval from, from you folks on the elevations and finish up. We did, we did a phased permit here with, uh, for just footings and foundations, which just got approved. That's where we're at, that's my story, I'm sticking to it.
Start on the right-hand side, Chip?
So what does this building back up to? Is there anything going to be built behind it, it's just kind of hard to, to see on this photo or layout?
Help me with that? Come on up, Mike.
John, can you go back to the, um, site plan? I'm Mike Johnson with Ascent Construction Group. So if we look at that site plan, on the back side is the base, the athletic fields for Rocky River High School, so there's a berm with all those trees on the backside, there's a large berm that's probably ten feet tall or so, and then that backs up directly through the, uh, athletic fields, so there's no more, um, construction for the park, so if you can, um, see the parcel, all the, that, um, dirt area is where the developer has basically mined that side of the street for excess dirt, and again, they left a berm along the back, all the way along the s- athletic fields and up, almost up to the school. And so the business part, um, to our north is a parcel that Mayor Phil Patrick is developing, there's, they've got two or three buildings planned for that corner, and then there's one more parcel to the side there, but that's it, there's nothing that runs along the back of our building, so there's no, um, nothing but the athletic fields.
How durable is this material to, to sunlight, to fading, to, to dirt and cleaning, can it be painted? I'm just a.
It can be painted, um, you know, it's a Kynar embossed finish, so it's got a twenty-five year warranty on it, so this, this lighter color is really not anything you're going to notice to fade, it's not, it's even more durable than like an ethos painted finish, uh, this here's, you know, because of the Kynar paint finish, it is more durable to the fading over time.
Roger?
Um, this is the first time I've ever seen that type of material, where all are you using it?
It's used, it's used on a lot of, uh, pre-engineered.
Where are you using it?
Oh, I'm, I, um, as a scent construction, this, I haven't used it, but in my previous, um, I basically just use it on industrial-type facilities throughout, um, none in, personally in Charlotte, I worked for a company previously up in Winston-Salem, and we used it a lot up there.
So there's not much of it?
Um, there's, because of the expense of it, it's not, you don't see it, normally you just see your standard ribbed metal panel.
Right, let's talk, let's talk about the expense of it.
Yeah.
How does it compare against?
It's.
Concrete, brick, or brick, or glass, or?
Well, it's less expensive than, for this building here, you know, we're also up against economics, we're, you know, o- honestly, we're already a million dollars over budget, so, versus like a tilt warehouse-type construction, this, this is still less expensive than a tilt building, but it's more expensive than just a normal metal, pre, metal built, metal siding, and this is used a lot on refrigeration-type buildings because of the R-value of it, uh, so you see it a lot more, and it's also got the nice clean interior finish, uh, for places like that, but most of your normal warehouses, because this is what this is, this is strictly warehouse except for the three thousand or so square feet up front, which is, you know, we've got the brick and.
Just, just curious, really not in my business, but you say your, the building's already a million over budget, what's up with that?
And, we got hit during the inflation of steel tripling in price.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, it's.
And demand.
It's a, you know, I do have, I, I think it's nice enough material, I just, I do have a problem in a, in a building, in a business park that is pretty well laid out as far as what type of, you've seen the other construction out there, and, uh, it doesn't look like brick, and, uh, I, I'm, I, I have a concern about the, you know, with it not being much of it around, your company hasn't used it, uh, this is all a brand-new venture, if, if it works, great, you know, I, I don't know, that's, that's still up in the air, but that's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
But our thought was, be, it is, from a distance, it's, it gives you the same aesthetic as a tilt-wall building, and there's a huge warehouse, tilt-wall warehouse as you enter this park, so that was the thought process is, and that's why the Architectural Review Board was fine with it, is because it does give you that concrete wall look, of course, it's not going to look like brick, but neither does a tilt-wall. But it is, you know, this, um, you know, we got our building from Varco Prune, these panels are manufactured by a company called Metal Span, who is a third party to a tremendous amount of pre-engineered metal buildings, so Metal Span is the producer of these, and they use it, um, more than, say, like a Varco Prune, so that's, all of these guys do, is they produce these type panels, they produce, you see a lot more of just a slick finish than you do the, the textured stucco, um, kind of concrete-looking finish.
Where could we go to see one of these? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Where could we go to see one of these?
Uh, I will, I will find, I will find out for us, I'll have to reach out through our, through my supplier, through Metal Span, and see where in Charlotte they have some of this product.
That's all I have right now.
Okay.
I don't really have any questions, I mean, I think, like you said, it looks a lot like a concrete stand-up panel, uh, I think the only concern I would have is the twenty-five year, I mean, concrete lasts for a hundred years, but I don't know that we'll be around.
Yeah, well, the concrete's going to last, obviously, but the paint on the concrete will, also fades too.
All right, Eric?
Uh, yeah, a couple of questions, uh, first question, uh, with this particular material, how are seams handled, um, between the panels, I guess vertically or?
It's a concealed fastener-type system, so they basically interlock, and there's mastic in between this, these grooves here, so you, you basically have to put one panel in, you fasten it into the secondary structure of it, and then the next panel just basically locks in place, and you've got the mastic that caucks, um, which creates a watertight, airtight seal.
Got it, so there's no ma, uh, like metal runners or anything that conceals it?
No, all you see is the panel.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, all you see is, all you see is that, and this.
All right.
So you don't see any of, any of that.
And then, uh, my next question was, uh, so, so this panel is different than the one that was presented at the public hearing?
No.
The elevations.
The elevations, only thing.
Yeah.
He had a more refined.
Got it, so the panel is still the same?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was the brochure that I handed him, that he was making copies of, was going to have.
Got it, that's all I got.
Uh, I have a couple of questions for you, um, so the back metal panel, will that be seen from these ball fields and stuff? The west side?
I'm sure there may be some visibility, I'm, I don't know how much because we could, our parcel's set a little bit higher than you got the berm, and then on the backside it drops down a little bit farther, so, you know, the line of sight kind of has it looking up past the berm, and it has, and it's, they left, uh, trees and everything else on it, so you're really not going to see much from the ball fields, because they left most of that natural, and they just cut the front face of that berm, uh, while they were mining for the dirt, and so it's, it's pretty heavily wooded along the backside, and again, your, your line of sight, if you're here, the trees up here, you're not going to really see a whole lot of the, any of these buildings from the ballpark, and I think they did that intentionally to kind of conceal the ballpark, or, sorry, to conceal the business park from the athletic fields.
Yeah, I think they did too, and that's what, that's my point, is, you know, if you're going to put a building up there, is it going to be something that the town will be proud of, or if there's public in those, in these ball fields, I mean, you know, now you're looking on a metal building versus a precast or a brick or something like that. I don't, that's not a bad looking, is that the size of the panel?
That's the width of it, correct.
The width of it, right there, what, what heights do you have to?
There'll be full height of our wall, so there's no, there's no seam as you go vertically.
Designed for steel panels, is that why y'all are pushing steel panels?
That's how this building is designed, yes. It's designed for these lightweight panels.
Yeah, so that's why you're pushing for the steel, right?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, and just because we also, you know, the building itself is designed for their, um, higher storage, and so we got clear span as well, so it's, it's designed, um, with some future value in mind as far as, you know, distribution, um, wide-span bays, less columns, so that's why pre-engineered is, um, the way this.
You've already bought the steel, I would imagine.
Correct.
Kind of in a pickle.
It was, I mean, it took a year to get it, so, three times, twice as much and four times longer to get, so, perfect.
Um, so, so the, the history of these things, how long have these things been around?
These panels have probably been around, um, at least twenty-five years.
So, yeah, they've got a good history.
They have a long history, yes. I mean, I've put, I mean, I've installed these myself personally, um, up in, more in the Greensboro, Winston-Salem market, um, with my previous experience, but, um, because the company I work.
What's the cost of that versus just a regular metal panel? Time, like, two times, three times?
Nah, it's probably about four times, four or five times more expensive.
I did a freezer building for, uh, CMS schools down at the lot, down in Charlotte, and we used those.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't doubt that it'd be good for, for a freezer locker.
Yeah, but I, I don't mind the pa, I, I hate the fact that, I don't hate the fact, but I, I kind of dislike the, what's happening with the backside back there, where you're just putting that, on that west side, where you're just putting metal up there.
Well, my understanding is the other buildings in the park, um, were allowed to have metal on the back sides of their buildings.
Do they have the view of the ballpark like that? Of, of the school area?
Uh, no, these are more on the front and backed up to, but they also back up to where you could have future development, so. But again, because of that large berm and the, and the fact that it's wooded, um, you know, we can, you're not going to really see the back of this building.
The back of the building, metal panel that you're dealing with is going to be the same color?
No, we were proposing just, um, a simple, cheaper panel because, um, if.
Colorize?
Colorize, yes, it'll be a similar color, yeah, it'll be a light color that's not going, you know, it's not going to be like a red color, that's just going to stand out.
Stand out, yeah.
Right, and that, and that's pretty common when you try and design something for an expandable rear wall, and then, when, when it came time to do the final, you know, five years, ten years, whatever it might be, then they would, you typically go back with your other panels that matched the rest of the building, but that's a less expensive way to create that expandable rear end wall for a typical warehouse-type building, just like, I think Mosack up the street did the same thing, they designed for a future expansion and just put metal on the back of their wall.
They're actually doing it now, aren't they?
I believe they are, and getting ready, or, I think they're getting ready to, or they are under construction.
Yeah, I know much of work going on, but, um, let me just grab my question. Anybody else got anything?
Well, I have one, uh, you said, you said the me, the metal's been ordered for some time, and it's taken you how long to get it?
Uh, it didn't, uh, like, oh, close to a year.
Yeah, but, but to that point, it's, you, you, you ordered the lighter design one, the lighter construction, constructed one, right?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
The design of the building, you said it was a lighter steel, lighter?
Well, it's a pre-engineered metal building, so by nature, they design it as light as possible, because that's where the cost-effectiveness comes in.
Right.
Less.
It'll support the panel, but it won't support masonry or?
It's, um, it's not designed for masonry walls, correct, not a tilt-wall.
Okay. My thing was, my, my question was, knowing where it is and what the, what the requirements were out there, I don't understand why we're dealing with this now.
Well, we presented this, our understanding was, we had to present this to the Architectural Review Board for approval, and that they're the ones who approved the system, so there was just a major misunderstanding when we were going back and forth with Ian Bruce, with Mayor Phil Patrick, that they had the responsibility of the Architectural Review, so we were, I guess, didn't do our due diligence, and I guess kind of blindsided when we did submit for the permit, and John called, and he's like, well, their standards are this, and we had thought we'd already went through that process, and so therefore, and that took a, quite a while as well to get through, uh, with these guys.
Yeah, I, I, I understand the dilemma there, but, but you're, but you're kind of putting the dilemma back on the town, and it's, it's kind of plain, not to be short, I mean, it's just, it's just kind of, here's, here's, here's what's approved, and you ordered a building a year ago that won't support what's approved, I mean, for the town, and I just, I just, and there's not any of that around here, and so, uh, exactly what it would look, end up looking like, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I have a, I have a, I have a real concern, I don't, I'm not trying to keep anybody from doing business, I'm a businessman myself, and, uh, but I just, I'm, I'm real concerned about when this, that we're in this position to make or break whether there's a building, when it's, this is not a surprise, it's always been here, and has it not, John, I mean, has, with the requirements, and are there, is the Architectural Review Board not aware of their requirements?
Well, so, um, so I'm actually dealing with two of these sites, and they're one, there's, there's actually another one, it's going to be a similar issue coming up soon.
A sim, that we're going to be dealing with?
Similar issue, and you will probably see that, uh, unless they somehow resolve it differently, but I, I think they're, um, they, but, so, Clear Creek, the developer, they do have an Architectural Review Board or person that looks over, and he's correct that they submitted to them and got the green light from them, now, what they said, though, is that they had a disclaimer that says you need to go get it approved by the town, and I think that's where that miscommunication he was speaking about happened, is he thought they gave them the permission to go forward, Clear Creek is saying, no, 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 we didn't, we said you need to talk to the town, and so that's why this was not called until right, I mean, it was the, I mean, it was right before I was getting approved on this plan, that I saw that there was an issue with the materials, and like I said, I'm juggling two sites, and they also had, uh, an issue, and so that made me go to them and said, hey, are y'all meeting these requirements? Because I'm working with another site that is having a problem with this, a- and that's how we got here, but the material requirements have been in place since the beginning, they did add some additional materials in two thousand nineteen, so as of two thousand nineteen, that's when you have the, the tilt-wall and all that was added, yeah.
Okay, and, and, uh, I have no issue with the back panel, really, being metal for expansion, heck, I want people to expand and grow their businesses, but, um, and, and hopefully y'all would be able to do something about the, uh, about the appearance from the school area, but my bigger problem is, is the metal, I, I just, I'm, I'm concerned about that, and not that I want to put anybody in a bind, but this is just for me, of course, and, you know, we have a higher power anyway that makes the decisions around here, but as far as from me and sitting on this board, I just, I just have a real concern about adding that to that mix when it's, uh, such an unknown, and it's, uh, and it looks like we're going to have to turn right around and do it again, so I'm concerned about setting a precedence here.
Possibly, I, I don't know what they're going to ask, but we'll see.
Well, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know either, but I'm just, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let me ask you this, John, so, if we did it for this one, are we locked in to setting a precedent? Can we do it as a one-time variance-type thing?
Okay, good question, and the Board of Commissioners also spoke about that, so the, the way this is being done is this is specific only to this property, so even if the Board... So even if the Board of Commissioners did approve this material and, and allowed them to do the elevations the way they are asking to do, it would only apply to this site. So if someone else came in, they would be subject to the rules that we have for Clear Creek, and they would not have that material allowance if, if these guys were approved. So this is unique to this property. So Clear Creek did not, they did not want to come, they could have come in and said, we want to change the material for the whole park. And I think what they said is, applicant, if you want it, you need to go forward and get it for your site. So that's, so this would only apply to that one property.
Yeah, so, and they understand the standards that are required.
Clear Creek?
Clear Creek.
Yes.
Architectural Review.
Well, not only do they understand it, they wrote it. Remember, in 2019, they wrote-
Well, they may have wrote it, but how did, I mean, it slipped through here.
Well, no, again, they, what they're saying is that they had a disclaimer, and I'm seeing emails, okay? So, but what they're saying is, is that they had the disclaimer that they need to go to the town to get that approved. And I think that's where the miscommunication is. So that, maybe they knew enough to say, that's not gonna pass the town, you need to talk to the town.
So you're saying they had that issue happen twice, though?
Right. So there's another site near this site that actually is what brought all of this to my attention, because it is a more obvious issue, because they're right on the corner. And that is when I reached out to that group, and I knew that I was also dealing with this site, so I went back to them and said, hey, are you guys meeting this material requirement? And that's where all these conversations started.
So what did their Architectural Review Board say about that site?
My understanding, and again, I could be confusing the two, but I think they were given a pass, both were given a pass with-
With the town's approval.
Yeah, exactly. That was the way I understood the conversation.
Town approval, the, the approval.
And if I may interject, Roger, to kind of address some of your concern is, again, this, this product was created to kind of give you that hard-coated look. So while you're saying it's a metal panel, yes, it is, but what you're seeing is the same exterior finish that you would see on a, a concrete tilt-wall building. The substrate is different, yes, but what you're gonna see as someone driving by or as a town, what you're gonna see is a nice-looking textured coat finish that's even better than paint because it's factory-applied. When you do a tilt-wall building, it's sprayed in the field.
I understand what you're saying, you know, from my, from my perspective, I own two metal buildings, okay? So, not with this material, but, but, but I just, my issue is, what's set in place, they wrote it, they updated it, and yet they didn't say anything to y'all, or, or from what you're saying is you, you weren't aware of that you would have to come through the local government to get approval for a building's requirements.
That's correct, yeah. Obviously, we would not have put ourselves in that position. We would not have ordered a 600,000 dollar building.
But you put us in that position to fix whatever you and Clear Creek's doing, and I don't, I don't think that's fair for the town to have to fix it. No offense, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not against any businessman, okay, or businessperson, man, woman, child, whatever. My issue is, we've been down these roads before where people make mistakes, and once we start trying to help fix a mistake, I know you say it's contingent to only this property, but the next thing is gonna be as an onslaught to our elected officials, to our, to our employees, all these types of things about, well, you did it over here, and because we, we went down those roads on southern, on many other developments, not business, but, but, you know, and then had to go back and, and, you know, and try to deal with all of that, and I'm just, that's, that's my only concern. Strictly, strictly the legalese here about, about what's here, and I'm really surprised when they wrote it and they updated it as soon as 19, and they didn't inform y'all about it. You know, about materials, you know, that's, that's required in their site. So I'm not exactly sure what they're doing, but to me, the bone you need to pick is with them.
Yeah, no, they, they know their materials, and they approved, you know, the metal building. The issue is, they got caught because he didn't, he, the, their company didn't come in here and get approval from Min Hill before you ordered the steel. You got caught up with the steel. If it was up to me and that panel was brought in front of us ahead of time, I would say that's a great-looking panel. And I think it'll look just like a tilt panel when it's done. The trouble is, just like Roger said, we're caught in the middle here, you know, you know. So, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly where we go with this. I, I think it's a strong panel, I think it's a good panel. I wish we had some history on it, it'd be nice to have somebody brought it in ahead of time, and for us to take a look at it and to take a look, see, and go see a structure, one of your structures, anybody's structure with this stuff on it. I mean, I can visualize it, it's gonna look just like a precast panel, not a precast, well, if it's precast-
Precast tilt.
Like a tilt panel, anyway. It's probably better because, you're right, it's not painted in the field.
Correct.
All right, any more discussion?
I have one other question. You, you said it took you a year to get the steel, so what's the availability of this product?
It's, it was manufactured with the building, so it's ready, ready to be shipped.
It was, what?
Oh, well-
It was manufactured with the building?
Yeah, so we actually, we would have, so we'll actually have to order this for our two sides.
But availability of the product?
Yeah, though, we've discussed it with them, and they'll do a special run for us to have it available if and when we get this approved.
So y'all had this originally approved, and when it went to your, the Architectural Planning Group in Clear Creek, you were using this panel on the front at that time?
We're using it on the high elevation on the front.
Right.
Because we have a step. So this building has a lower roof line for our office area, and then it steps up. And so we're using this panel, it's probably 10 feet worth on the higher elevation behind kind of the office. So you have the, what you'll see is the facade with a raised parapet on the front office side, and then what you'll, you'll see a little bit of this panel on the front because the building steps up once you get to the warehouse portion of the building.
So from the get-go, y'all basically had the wrong materials.
Well, we had, we were having this discussion with the Architectural Review Board to have, to use these materials. So it was, we were working with the owner and the Architectural Review Board to, to kind of help with the cost impact and just the look of this building and what they were using it for. So it was, it was all kind of done in conjunction with each other, and the discussion with the type of panel, the type of materials, and, you know, we went back and forth and, you know, kind of had the same conversation with the review, Architectural Review Board and Ian Bruce, and this is what we, you know, decided on. And again, that was the understanding was that, in our opinion, we felt as though they were the ones that were, we had to get the approval from. And so that's why we went through this, all this discussion before any building order was ever placed or anything like that. So we really didn't get them to, the supplier, too involved. It was more Chris doing the elevations and the plans, and going back and forth with Ian and the, his review board people. So we kind of got in this mess together.
Yeah. Unfortunately, what happens with, with us is we have ordinances to live to, and we have things that are put down on paper to live to. And the people that changed those in the original are the Board of Commissioners. So, you know, we're kind of caught here, it's, it's really, I mean, they might look for our recommendation, but, you know, that's, that's gonna be a hard thing for us because we know what's supposed to be there. And, you know, so I think the variance is gonna probably have to come from the Board of Commissioners. But I'll leave that up to these guys, I mean, we'll, we'll take a vote on it and figure it out, but.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I, I kind of agree with your position there. I think y'all are in a jam, and maybe not of your complete own-making, but certainly your responsibility nonetheless, yours and Architectural Review Board, your company, whatever, not going to the local government to get approval also. But I don't doubt that you might, that you might very well be in, in need of a variance here, but I don't believe that it's this panel's job, this board's job to grant such a thing. I think that would, that would have to come from our elected officials if they deemed that, if, if they deemed that the circumstances, you know, are sufficient, yeah. And I just have a, I wouldn't be able to support this because we're supposed to enforce and go by the rules, not make the rules. And, and no offense to you, your company, the builder, I mean, I mean, the person that's gonna have the business there, the owner, architect, anybody, it's just, in my opinion, this is a little beyond our view.
I think if you'd have brought that thing to us, I think it would, we'd approve. But because we have a set of rules that we're supposed to live by, you know, it's like, do we make a variance? Or do we, that's really not our job. We can make a recommendation, but it's really not our job to make the variance. It's up to the Board of Commissioners to make the variance on it, I think. I think it's a fine panel myself, but-
I think it is too.
You know, our job basically is to live by these ordinances that we write in. And, and we've been caught before with people that come in and basically ask for a variance, and all of a sudden, everybody's in here looking for a variance, and we get caught up in some bad situations like that. So, anyway, any more discussion? Anybody from anybody? If not, I'll, I'll take a, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would put forth a, on ZZ 22-3, an unfavorable recommendation, this time from the planning board.
Can I get a second?
You have a second.
You have a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any negatives?
I do a negative.
Yeah, yeah, you against it?
Yeah.
The motion? All right. So what are you, what are you saying, Kenny? Where are you at?
I don't know if we can back up. Are we making, are we approving this, or are we just making a recommendation to the Commissioners?
You're only making a recommendation. This is, this has to be a decision of the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah. And, and in that case, I would make, I would be with Eric.
All right, not to stay with the motion.
Correct.
All right, two to two.
So it's on you.
All right, so I, I would basically say I would, I would do an unfavorable and pass this on to the Board of Commissioners for their, for their discussion and their final say-so on this thing. So it's an unfavorable recommendation from our planning board. And so now it's up, when y'all take it on, it's up to the Commissioners to decide where to go with it. Yeah? All right? Three to two. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
Done.